Okay, good evening and welcome, everybody. I'd like to bring the August 27th Planning Commission meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, limited in justice.
Okay, can we have roll call, please? Present.
Commissioner Ramiro Maldonado?
Present.
Commissioner Margaret Williams?
Present.
Vice Chair Ellen Mallory?
Present.
Mike Etheridge, Chair?
Present.
Okay, item one on the consent calendar where the meeting minutes to approve from the August 27th meeting, which I think I may have actually said was today by accident when I opened the meeting, today's September 10th for the record. Did anybody have any comments or edits on the meeting minutes that were circulated? So at our pre-meeting yesterday with the staff, Ellen and I did have one suggested edit to the second page of the minutes where it says commission comments, where it says recommends that a project team be available for the public. What the recommendation actually was for a publicly available website that transparently shared some of the measurement data that was communicated on the project be made available, that was a suggestion that was presented, and so I believe that the minutes are going to be edited to reflect that. If everybody's in agreement with that edit.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve with that edit that we just mentioned?
I'm motioning to reapprove with the edits that Chair has suggested.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was minutes past, five zero. Okay, now we'll move to the public comments section of the meeting. Does anybody in the audience wish to comment on something other than the Hayward Park study session matter? Anybody? Okay, we'll close the public comment and we will move to item two on the consent calendar, the Hayward Park train station pre-application study session.
Good evening to the members of the Planning Commission. My name is Philip Brennan. I'm the project planner for this pre-application project. Before I begin, I want to draw a notice to the packet that you have before you now. These are public comments that were submitted into the planning department after the administrative report had been finalized and published, which is why it's not included in the administrative report. These have been emailed to you as well as hard copies printed out. There's also a few hard copy, hard copies available for the public's review. With that said, I'd like to begin with a brief overview of the project site itself to provide some context. This is a 2.81 acre site, approximately 122 square feet lot. This currently exists as a Caltrain parking lot that serves or provides 225 park and ride stalls. The general plan and zoning district designation are the same, Transit Oriented Development or TOD for short. The TOD zoning district refers to the development standards and policies and guidelines specified in the rail corridor plan. The site is located within the rail corridor plan's Hayward Park Station TOD overlay zone and specifically the overlay zone station area, which is intended for predominantly multifamily residential development with max densities up to 50 dwelling units per acre and FAR up to 3.0. The project site is surrounded by various building heights and uses in its immediate vicinity, including the four and five story mixed use buildings of Station Park Green to the east, a highway overpass, State Route 92 to the south, and a four story office building which houses WeWork and Medallia. To the west are the railroad tracks and Hayward Park Station's platform. This is a multifamily development proposing 189 for rent units, including 28 below market rate units, which I'll speak in detail about later in this presentation. The project proposes a 2.54 F max or FAR. The project is comprised of two detached five story buildings and proposes a max building height of 54 feet as measured from the finished grade to the highest plate line. The project provides two levels of above grade garage parking located under one building and offers 232 off-street parking stalls for the exclusive use of its tenants. The apartment unit breakdown provides, excuse me, the, the development is providing offers units ranging in size from 525 square feet studio units up to approximately 1,500 square foot three bedroom units. The applicant has not specified at this time which units will be offered at affordable rates, but based on the distribution of bedroom types, the BMR units will likely be predominantly one and two bedroom. Turn this off. The, just a quick overview of the site plan. The residential development again is comprised of two buildings. Building A contains 115 of the units and the parking garages. Building B contains 74 units and is located on the left. Along the east property line here, there's a 20-foot wide EVA for Station Park Green which separates the two developments. Along the west property line is an eight-foot wide multi-use bike and pedestrian pathway. That pathway would connect to the existing Class One bike and pedestrian path that terminates here at the north end of the lot. The new connection would provide a safer access route for pedestrians and bicyclists traveling from the Sunnybury neighborhood onto Concar Drive and Pacific Boulevard. In between the two buildings is a proposed 16-foot wide platform connection which links to the existing platform pathway that exists there today. Provided here are examples of proposed material and finishes that are referenced in the subsequent elevation slides. We do have a material board. I think it's right here. I'm happy to. The material choices are complementary of the modern motif of the building's architectural design, utilizing painted cement plaster, horizontal fiber cement siding accents, aluminum frame storefronts along segments of the street facing ground floor, and metal mesh screening along both podium garage levels. Project plans are included in Attachment One. Again, the proposed architectural style is contemporary in design and incorporates strong angular forms, articulated vertical bays, modulated facades, and recessed window fenestrations. The applicant does have their architect here and he's available to speak in detail regarding, specific details regarding the project architecture. The project design will be reviewed by the city's design review consultant after submittal of the formal application for, and to ensure consistency with the general plan's urban design element and the rail corridor plan's community character and design guidelines, as well as to address any concerns expressed by the Planning Commission here tonight and comments received from the public pertaining to design after the submittal. In terms of the primary onsite amenities, the project is offering approximately 17,500 square feet of open courtyards at the third level for tenants, and that's located, both of those courtyards are located at Building A. Included in those courtyards are cooking facilities, patio and lounge style furniture, spa, and cabana. In addition to that, the project proposes 282 bicycle stalls, including a publicly accessible bike room, which is proposed at the ground level near the promenade. Additionally, a club room, a fitness center, collaborative workspace areas are also being proposed, but those details are being finalized. As noted previously, this project offers 28 below market rate units comprised of 16 very low household rate income units, which are those which are less than or equal to 50% of the area median income. It's also voluntarily providing 12 percent, or excuse me, 12 moderate rate income units, which is our units for households of less than or equal to 120% of the AMI. The 11%, the provision of 11% of very low income units entitles the project to a 35% density bonus and two development concessions and incentives. The project satisfies the inclusionary below market rate program requirement that at least 10% of the rental units are offered at very low income rates. It should also be noted that the applicant has not formally requested to utilize either of the developing concessions or incentives entitled at this time, it's entitled to at this time. The project without the density bonus could build up to 50 dwelling units per acre on the, or which equates to approximately 141 units for the 2.8 net acre site. With the 35% density bonus, it is permitted to build up to 190 units, which equates to 67.25 dwelling units per acre. The applicant does intend to utilize a buy right provision specified in the government code that allows for a reduced parking ratio of .5 parking spaces per bedroom for new housing developments within one half mile of a major transit stop. Based on this reduced parking ratio, the project is only required to provide 141 spaces, inclusive of visitor and accessible parking. The project as proposed provides a total of 232 spaces or 1.23 spaces per unit for the exclusive use of its tenants. The applicant held the required neighborhood meeting on July 31st at the San Mateo Marriott. Approximately 30 people were in attendance. The primary comments and concerns raised at the meeting related to public parking, where park and ride users will park, the adequacy of parking for the project's tenants, how will the project address the increased ridership projected in Caltrain's business plan, and comments related to whether more affordable housing units could be provided. The meeting summary is included, and including the list of issues raised during the neighborhood meeting can be reviewed in Attachment Seven. At this time, staff would like to ask the Planning Commission to comment on the following issues tonight regarding site plan and parking, specifically the evaluation of two parking design proposals, which I'll briefly go over, as well as the building design as it relates to the overall architecture style, architectural style and design approach, including building materials, massing, and building forms, and specifically the provision of urban open space available for public use. In terms of site plan and parking design, we, I'd like to touch on the proposal to not provide any parking for park and ride users at the train station. The proposal to not provide any replacement of the 225 existing parking spaces available for Caltrain park and ride users is a fundamental issue in staff's determination. Staff has met with the applicant team and communicated its concerns with this aspect of the design from the onset of the pre-application submittal. The TOD zoning district was created with the purpose of supporting transit supportive uses and encouraging active modes of transportation. However, it was not intended to eliminate access for those needing to use their vehicle to utilize the train, as noted in the reference policy here. The lack of available parking conflicts with the intent and stated policies of the rail corridor plan. It has the potential for increasing on-street parking in the surrounding neighborhoods, specifically along 19th Avenue, Pacific Boulevard, and the residential streets within the Sunnybury neighborhood, and is not in line with Caltrain's own 2040 vision business plan, which protects increased levels of service and weekday boardings at the station under each of its projected growth scenarios, which could result in the real possibility of inducing park and ride demand, not just in the near future, but also in the years to come. I'd like to touch on site circulation and access. As noted, the building is comprised in two, into two separate buildings, approximately 900 feet across the lot. Staff has concerns regarding the efficiency of the site circulation when the entirety of the project's parking is located under one building, Building A to the right here. When the entirety of the parking is located under one building and without covered or convenient access to Building B. Given the proposed layout, you could have scenarios where, for instance, you have someone parking in one of the EV spaces or ADA spaces at the far south end of the development. They would have to span the 500 feet walking down the drive aisle of the garage and depending if they're on the second floor, go down the, go down the stairs or take the elevator, exit the lobby, go across this approximately 60-foot, 60-foot open concourse, which is uncovered and open to the elements, access the lobby, take the stairs or the elevator up to the fifth floor, walk the other 200 feet, 50 feet to the end unit at, in Building A towards the north. So it's easy to imagine the path of access being even in more inconvenient for someone who has arms full of groceries, carrying or walking with children or moving large or cumbersome items such as furniture. So it should be noted that the hammerhead located between both buildings is intended for service and emergency vehicles. It also serves as a primary pathway to the train platform for pedestrians. So having vehicles parking or moving in and out of this area seems to be in conflict with the intended purpose. Now, in speaking with the applicant just before this meeting, they seem to abandon that idea for that usage, but even if we are to, if, if loading for the tenants and delivery services is to place on Concar, you have 189 units and you can likely anticipate roughly 300 residents living at this development, most likely working professionals who are all coming home at the same time, ordering service, Postmates, DoorDash, whatever it might be, and all of these cars queuing along Concar Drive to exit their vehicles, span the length of this development, drop off their delivery. So I think there's a problematic issue here that hasn't been fully addressed by the applicant, and we'd like for the Planning Commission to weigh in on that. In terms of the overall architectural style and design, staff does, does not have any obvious issues with the, the design, but we did want to ask for the commission's feedback regarding the provision of open, or urban open space. The corridor plan states that the role of the station is to serve an important civic role by having a strong sense of identity and being recognized as important, easily accessible defining elements. It then provides specific policy and guidance that speaks to the utilization of plazas near the Caltrain stations for the purpose of creating active and inviting urban open spaces, providing informal gathering areas near the pedestrian circulation routes. The project does provide an arrival plaza near the corner of Concar and Pacific Boulevard. However, given its immediate proximity to the train station, it's staff's opinion that this plaza should be more, a more substantial part of the project's overall design, perhaps pushing a portion of the ground floor of the building's frontage back to increase the plaza size and provide clear visual lines to the train station for pedestrians coming down Concar. It should be noted that the corridor plan does provide guidance regarding the size of plazas, saying it should be no smaller than 5,000 square feet. I don't know if we're requiring 5,000 square feet, but I think that we're, we may be looking for something more substantial in size. The currently proposed arrival plaza is just over 1,000 square feet or less than 1% of the total lot size. Since the submittal of the pre-application, staff has received 46 public comment letters from the individuals. Most of the comments, well, the comments can be characterized as supportive and also highly critical of the, of the proposal. Specifically, comments are generally about public parking and park and ride users, public parking for park and ride users needing to be provided, the impacts of no parking on nearby residential streets, not enough affordable housing, traffic impacts resulting from more development, too much development happening too fast, as well as we did receive a letter from questioning the compliance with the Surplus Land Act, and our city's assistant attorney may want to step in and speak to that now.
So the Surplus Lands Act is a state law that requires public agencies who are disposing of public property that's over 5,000 square feet in area for sale to, for sale or lease to low-income housing providers or park districts. And it's really an issue between Caltrain and the senders of the letters, but I wanted to let you know that I'm available in case the commission has questions about the state Surplus Lands Act.
So in addition to the individual letters, we did really receive letters from four different organizations, including the Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto regarding the Surplus Land Act, the Bay Area Housing Advocacy Coalition stating its support of the project, the San Mateo County Economic Development Association providing general support of transit oriented development and affordable housing, but it did not take a position on this project, and a formal request from, for sequin land use notice information from the law firm Lozao and Drury on behalf of the Laborers International Union of North As proposed, the project is anticipated to require the following entitlements: a site plan and architectural review for the construction of 189 residential units, a site development and planning application for the removal of major vegetation from a parcel of land in conjunction with its redevelopment, and a tentative parcel map. Now, this is, deviates from what the information provided in the staff report. This was a new development that I was just notified about late this past week after the staff report had been finalized, but the applicant is proposing a subdivision of the existing 3.1 acre lot into the 2.81 net lot that's being proposed for development here today. The .37 acre, approximately 16,000 square foot portion would be reserved for the, the joint powers board for right of way and operational purposes. As it was stated in the, the staff report, this was previously going to be defined by the terms of lease, but the applicant has chosen to go this route instead. Sample findings for the approval for the above planning applications are included in Attachment Seven, and the necessary requirements for approval of the tentative parcel map are provided in Title 26 of the municipal code. In terms of the next step, next steps, staff wanted to explain, quickly explain the next steps for this project. After tonight's meeting, the applicant may revise the plans based on the Planning Commission and public comment feedback. Afterwards, the applicant will submit a formal application, or it's their choice to submit a formal application. The formal application will include an environmental review, which contains technical reports, and finally, the project is, when deemed ready, the project will be brought to the Planning Commission for a public hearing for a decision. Are there any questions?
Is the applicant making a presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Right now, I'd like to bring the applicant up to provide you their presentation.
Philip, are you going to advance the slides, then?
I can't do that, yeah.
Great. We'll get this here.
There's also a laser pointer right there, right in front of you. Yep.
Yeah. I think most of our slides are set, so we don't need to do that. So, that's okay. Thank you. So first, I'd like to thank you, Philip, for the presentation. My name is Ken Bush with the Cyrus Regis Group. We're the sponsor of this community. We're partnering with Caltrain, and we have Jessica Epstein from Caltrain here with us if there are any questions for that, from her. We also have our development team and a design team. John Ennis with BDE will be speaking in a little bit. I met John about, almost 20 years ago now when he was swimming the English Channel, and we've created a number of communities together. He's done a great job for us. And then we also have the Gazardo Partnership and Willsey Hamm here. And Kevin Choi from our team is here. Kevin and I have been working on this for a number of years. We started this process with Caltrain in 2014 when the statement of qualifications went out. So a little bit about Cyrus, the Cyrus Regis. We are a local, homegrown development firm based over in Mariner's Island. We've been developing communities up and down the peninsula exclusively in the Bay Area for the last 27 years. It's been a long time. We've created over 9,000 units in this area, and we've been, like I said, we've both for sale and for rent. for rent. We also have a property management arm that manages 5,500 units in the Bay Area and 20,000 units in the Western United States. So we have a lot of experience doing this. Recently, we've completed 888 North San Mateo Drive. You're probably familiar with that, up on Peninsula and North San Mateo Drive at the Burlingame border. And when we did that, it's very similar to this. It's a long site, and it's also adjacent to the train. So we know how to work in those sites. So we have that experience, and 888 has been very well received, I believe. Then, we also, if you haven't been to any of our communities, I'd invite you to any of them. If you contact me, I'd love to give you a tour, or any members of the public that want to see the great communities that we built would like to offer that tour. Then, for Caltrain, I think everyone knows the Joint Powers Board in Caltrain, but their mission is to provide transit and move people up and down the peninsula and to create a safe, modern rail system. Then, you know, there was the community outreach that Philip mentioned. We've done a bunch of community outreach. Philip did a good job summarizing that. I'll also say that there were some questions on the business plan and sustainability that came up from the public. We've also reached out to a number of the neighborhood associations. They haven't responded, and we've reached out to a number of individuals in addition to that. So when you look at the Bay Area, it's hard to not understand the jobs-housing imbalance. 83,000 jobs, 7,100 units, 11.2 to 1 jobs-housing imbalance. And what does that do? That creates traffic. That has people driving to the peninsula, driving to San Mateo, and the best thing that we can do is move people next to transit. You know, one of the type of products you'd want to put near transit, we believe, is rental housing. People go through different stages of their life, and they have a stage where they value housing the most. And then, when they finish that stage, they can move to a place that is less transit-rich. But when they value it, they move to those transit-rich locations, and this is that type of location. We expect that this community will generate ridership of 50% to 70% of the residents will take transit during the morning and evening peak commutes to get to and from work, and that'll really help and make the community area more sustainable. Next slide. San Mateo is very Caltrain-rich. You know, this is the only community on the peninsula that has three stations. There's the Hillsdale Station, which is in Bay Meadows and provides the best service. In fact, we have shuttles from our office over on Mariner's Island Boulevard, and it drives to the Hillsdale Station as opposed to the Hayward Park Station, and that's because of the service. We believe that people, when they're driving to the station, they'll choose a station that has the best service, and probably the Hillsdale Station, which has over 500 parking spaces available there. Then there's the San Mateo Downtown Station, and that San Mateo Downtown Station that focuses on the retail and the businesses in the downtown. And we think that's, and they have over 200 parking spaces there, too. And then the Hayward Park Station, that primary mode of travel that Caltrain believes and we believe is both walking and parking, and the best way to promote that is to promote residences next to that station. And yes, ridership will increase, or the number of stops and trains will increase to an hour in, I believe, the moderate plan that Caltrain is talking about. That's still to be decided and finalized, but, you know, that'll just promote additional ridership from the residents there. The one thing that, can you go back for a second? You know, and that half a mile radius, as you probably know, is really the TOD, the walk radius. That's about a 10-minute walk. So then, what we try to do, too, is we look and see from a bike perspective. If someone's going to take 10 or 15 minutes to bike, you can see how broad that reach is, and that's the next bike slide. So you can see that that covers both stations and a large area. So all of those people have the ability to bike to the station and then use the bike room that we're proposing. That's a safe, clean, secure area for people to store their bikes. Excellent. Next slide. So this is the site itself. You'll see that orange line, that outlines the property. And what we do when we first come upon a site, we look at the connectivity, public safety, and other things that drive our design. We feel we take the site, the location, and the strengths, and then we multiply on those. And the next, so the first thing to focus on is the actual platforms. So this shows you where the platforms are and then the areas that cross the platforms. Those are the platform crossings. So if you're taking the train in the morning or in the evening, you are going to have to use those platforms. Everyone's going to use the platform crossing once. So we wanted to locate our pedestrian points from those platform crossings. And then the next. So you can see that there's the north-south, the lower that runs along our site, north-south bike and pedestrian connection, and that was very important to us. We feel that that's a huge strength of the site that provides a number of connections for that both bike and walk mode that's targeted for the station, and also the east-west connection to Station Park Green. And there's also a connection on Concar. As we finish Concar, that'll create a really nice environment for people to walk from Delaware all the way to the station. There's also bus stops on Concar, too, and commute.org runs that bus stop, and then there's also a, or the bus, and then there's also a place for Uber and Lyft drop-offs. You know, I'd like to, then there's also the eyes on the street, and that really promotes the safety. So right now, if you're there in the evening, you might not feel that safe, but when residences are there and they live there and they're looking out their window and they're seeing people and they keep their eye on it and it's well-lit, that'll create a much safer environment for both the platforms itself and those pedestrian pathways. I'd like to introduce John Ennis to talk a little bit about, more about the site and how we met those goals.
John Ennis, BDE Architecture. Thanks for the great presentation, and Ken kind of set me up. What we're looking at here really is a project of two plazas. That's the way I think about it. And those two plazas are the things that coordinate directly to the ends of the platform. Does the next slide show some lines on it? Okay. So those are the two plazas, and the first one, Concar Plaza, out on the right side there, is at the turn of the road. I think the configuration of the road makes it highly visible, and, you know, going with the theme that Ken's been talking about in the staff report, we really want to welcome bikes and pedestrians to the project right at the street there, and we have some renderings that show that. Yeah, that's okay. And then the other plaza, we talked about in the center there. So really, these two plazas are kind of organizing all of the elements in the project, which I'll get into the details of, I think on the next slide shows fairly well. So I might use the pointer here. If I point at it, you can't see it, I don't think, but along Concar, we have organized kind of the main common areas of the building, the high-energy areas of the building, the leasing office, the lounge, and the gym. So these areas are located right along there, right next to the plaza. So it creates a very highly energetic front, eyes on the street, and it's really the front door to the project. Moving in, and here's the plaza that we talked about, I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Moving in, I think it's important to de-emphasize the car, and what we're doing, we're bringing the automobiles, and they immediately pull into the garage, and they're out of the way. So they're not, there's no vehicles, there's no vehicle impact on this project or crossing of cars and pedestrian, things like that. We bring them in, we get rid of the car, we de-emphasize it. The rest of the time, we're just talking about bikes and pedestrians, which I think is a great idea. This is the common bike, actually not common, the public bike room. So folks who ride their bike 10 minutes from that diagram Ken just showed could come here, find a well-lit, secure, safe, you know, on the first floor of our secure podium for use, and then you could walk right over the platform. So we're pretty excited to be able to offer that. Then, over here, we have a common area bike room for our project, conveniently located on the, what we're calling, let's call this the Concar Plaza and this the Caltrain Plaza. We worked with FIRE to create a little loading area here that is, it's agreeable with them. That area would be where you'd, if you moved in or moved out or got a delivery of a large item, that could be staged there temporarily for delivery to either project. Obviously, this is the larger plaza that we talked about, and we're locating, again, more common areas. That's the community room off of that plaza, you know, to create a lot of energy and, you know, eyes on the plaza. We have the bikes coming and going. And then continuing down this bike trail, we have the co-working area. That was good anticipation on the slide change. So the next, moving one level up into the project, we're now up off the ground and we're inside of the building. We have the common area, and we placed it here so it's away from the majority of the sound of the train coming by. So we have barbecues and outdoor areas as described in the staff report, but we wanted to locate that there, so there's a nice setback between the Station Park Green community and our community. It's quiet, and it's the organizing element for the project above the podium. We have another smaller podium here, another smaller outdoor area here, which is more, probably, it's less active use. And then the next slide. So this shows the project. You see the little diagram up here. We're looking at the corner of the building here along Concar. So we feel that the combination of locating the plaza there along with the EVA and the bike path, you know, it might be less than 5,000 square feet, but it really opens up nicely to the community. It's very welcoming and has some public art, which I'll get into in a second. The organizing element for the building on the side, the architecture, we have a nice, high-quality granite stone base with a board form, concrete tile along the base. So we're trying to emphasize a base to the building that's very tall, it's like a floor and a half, I think maybe two floors there, to accommodate those public uses that we were just talking about, very well-lit, very transparent, forming the base of the building, the middle of the building where we get, you know, the residential part of the building, and then the top is articulated to create kind of a crown or top element to the building. So we have that base, middle, top going, and the nice plaza. This is a blow-up of that, so we have some public art here to be determined in the future the details of, but we're leaving space for that. And you can just see how close we are to the platform, and if you remember, in plan, this plaza is just adjacent to one of the ends of the platform, and then people are invited down that EVA and bike path and walkway to the other plaza, which is the next slide. So now you're looking, if you can see the little plan up here, you're looking at this break between the building. We really worked hard to create an architecture that was interesting. Again, a lot of common uses at the ground floor, interesting use of materials to break down the building, lots of windows. There's no real backside to the project. The project is a front on all sides, and so we have two of the building frontages onto that plaza to create a nice, energetic, a lot of people moving through it, a lot of eyes on the plaza. If you could just go back, I'm sorry, like, to the plan, I'm making you go back, I'm really sorry. I forgot to mention one thing. This is a good one. So obviously, you guys probably see a lot of nice square sites with courtyards. This is a different-shaped site. So outside of the plazas as organizing elements and the common areas, we wanted to get all the parking done in this building, which had a little bit more sight, get all cars out of the way, get them in that parking garage. This part down here, we wanted to utilize it as best we could, and really, that's, there's no parking in that site. But we think it works. We think it's a good way to utilize that narrow site. You know, we did talk about how if you parked in the furthest spot and lived in the furthest unit, it's kind of a big walk, but I think if you did a weighted average of where the parking is to all the units, it's probably not that long a walk. And of course, we can definitely have ADA parking in the garage right below here. I think you remember the parking garage. We got ADA parking here, and then it's not that far of a walk. And we assign the parking so people can live, you know, people who live on this side of the project can park on that side and vice versa. So I think there's some flexibility in the parking. And again, in conclusion, we want to emphasize the plazas, emphasize pedestrians and bikes, and de-emphasize the vehicle on this particular site. And I think that's a good place for me to give it back to Ken, and I'm here for any questions and more detail. Thank you.
Excellent. We gotta go back to the end of the architecture. Those are the Rail Corridor Plan goals. Keep going. Next one? So you're all familiar with the Rail Corridor Plan, and, you know, we list a number of objectives that we're meeting, but the fundamental theme of the Rail Corridor Plan is to put as many people to both live and work next to transit, and that will really help to reduce traffic and make a more sustainable community, both sustainable from a traffic perspective and also from an environmental perspective. Next slide. You know, from a sustainability perspective, you know, the big thing is the transit-oriented development. You know, when you look at greenhouse gas emissions, over 50% of greenhouse gas emissions are issued or come out of surface transportation, primarily cars. So the more people we can get out of their cars, the single occupancy vehicles, the more sustainable that becomes. Caltrain is a very sustainable method of transit. It's going to be operated with electricity. It's very sustainable. We're also going to be part of the TM, Transit Management Agency, and have TDM measures, solar panels, VOC, EV chargers. We also do a lot of inspections. We're smart about our designs, and that's how we create really environmental communities. ADA was a lead platinum community, and that's because we were smart about it and we did it, we were very deliberate about the decisions we made. You know, I'd like to talk about the community benefits because our community benefit program is very robust. This is one of the most robust community benefit programs we've ever offered with our partner, Caltrain. They've made, really helped us to meet these goals. We're offering, we're paying prevailing wage for all of our construction workers on-site. We offer significant affordable housing that I'll talk to you about in a second, public art, you know, short-term bikes, making that connection, so there'll be a complete streetscape from Delaware to the train. We're going to pay over $13 million in real estate taxes over 10 years. Right now, this property's paying no real estate tax because it's owned by the JPA, and we're going to be paying over $3 million in park fees. Next slide. You know, the really big portion of those community benefits has a huge impact on the community is the affordability. You know, the city's standard for affordability would require 14 very low-income apartments at 50% of the median income, and then we're providing two more and to maximize that state density bonus. And it's really to provide as many homes as possible next to transit. Then, we're also providing 12 moderate-income apartments. That is totally voluntary. We came in with that offer, and that is to house the missing middle. Those are our first responders, our teachers, our city employees. We think that's a very, very big contribution and community benefit, and that's, and we're doing that for the community. I'd like to go to the next slide. With that, we'd love to hear your comments on the community, answer any questions. We're here to get your feedback, and we're available for questions. We have our entire team here to answer any questions you may have. We can go back to the, thanks. Okay. Okay. You know, that has been a recurring, we have had that challenge on this, but we got through it, so that's okay.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Philip, did the staff have any other presentation on this, or that completes the presentation?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, before we go to public comment on this item, I'd like to offer the Commission, if they have any clarifying questions for staff or the applicant on the presentation that was made. And can we start with you, Commissioner Williams?
I was going to ask if they could go back to the sustainability slide. I didn't get a chance to look at that altogether. Would that be okay?
Sure.
There's like the last one. Okay, thank you. Clarifications at this time?
Yeah. Any clarifying questions for staff or applicant?
I think that was it.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
You mentioned earlier that there was a change in the loading zone or emergency vehicle, and I missed that update.
Sure. In previous discussions with the applicant, that hammerhead turnout between the two buildings was being proposed as an area for loading, be it emergency vehicles or staging, but for delivery services and whatnot, that was being proposed as an area to serve those purposes. And so I was just informed prior to this meeting that that wasn't the case any longer.
So where is it now? So where is it now?
They're, I don't want to speak for them, but they were proposing it along Concar, I think, right? You're proposing the loading, the loading zone in front of Concar now? In front of the building?
I'm sorry, I think I wasn't as clear when I, before the meeting. For move-ins, move-outs, that'll be in the center between the two buildings. Okay? For deliveries, if you're going to say a delivery, you were asking Uber Eats or DoorDash or something about that, that would be on Concar.
On the, on the far tip of the building?
On the Concar Drive.
Okay. And where will the emergency vehicles then go?
They will have access to the center of the, of the community. So we have worked with the fire department to develop a plan that's acceptable to them. We spent a lot of time working with the fire chief.
And then will that area also be available to residents to have short-term parking, or is that strictly delivery?
Strictly deliveries.
Okay, thank you.
I'd prefer to hold my questions till after public comment.
Just as a matter of accuracy, the actual number of units the development would be required to meet the city's inclusionary program is, would be 15 units, not 14, as was stated. Any fractional units are calculated, any results that end up in a fractional unit are rounded up, so...
I'll wait to have the public comments.
Okay.
Actually, I do have one other clarifying question. So I wanted to clarify, what is the EVA lane? Is that electrical, electric vehicle? What is exactly that?
Emergency vehicle access.
Oh, of course. Thank you.
I have a question for the applicant. In the staff materials I presented, it was mentioned that the project is not anticipated that you'll be able to comply with requirements of stormwater treatment. Can you speak to that? That wasn't a part of anybody's presentation, but is there some kind of consideration there?
So we will, the, the state has a mandate for stormwater, storm treatment, and that mandate has an, provides for an exception to utilize a media filter, mechanical means of treatment. So regardless, that, that will be treated. But you can use a mechanical means in the context of a media filter rather than a swell or low-flow planters of that nature. And you can do that when you're near transit and when you don't have any parking that's exposed to the sky. And we're, in other cities that we've worked in, we have received that consideration for communities near transit and for communities that don't have any parking that is exposed to the sky. So we're asking for that same consideration here, because that is, as I understand it, that is the permit that the city, the city has from the state. So we'd still be treating it, we would just do it through a different mechanism.
Okay. So this is an issue around the city's requirements relative to other cities?
It's anticipated to be, I think it might be informative to have staff from Public Works speak to it.
So for stormwater treatment, the project is eligible for those mechanical treatments that Ken stated, but in order to implement those mechanical treatments, the applicant has to show the infeasibility of using low-impact development, which is the more natural methods of stormwater treatment, which is, for example, the bio-retention areas or flow-through planners. So they have to show us the technical and economic infeasibility of doing the natural methods of stormwater treatment.
And we can work with staff through that process then, and provide that in the next phase.
Okay. One other question for the applicant. Can we put up the, the overhead map again of the site?
Let me know when you see what you...
Okay. This is good right there. So just so I'm clear, and this is a follow-up to Commissioner Mallory's question. So, because I don't think, I think in the plans that we were given, this middle area was meant to be for all service deliveries as well as emergency access. Are you, and I believe it's accessed from Concorde down this path, which in the materials that we presented looked like that was primarily pedestrian pathway. So it might, I understand that now from your comments, that this is no longer meant to be used for any access of vehicles with the exception of emergency vehicles or if a resident is actually moving in or moving out.
And it would be trashed, too.
Okay, so there would be, and would that be daily or weekly, or what would the frequency of that be?
It depends. We have to work with recology on that. I don't anticipate that it would be daily, but we would have to, as I said, work with recology. I mean, for, there might be some maintenance, you know, for the PG&E transformers and things of that nature that are back there, but it'd be very infrequent.
Okay. And then just so for clarity, so then Concorde Drive here, this is where all other deliveries, UPS, Amazon, DoorDash, everything else, they would be parking here on Concorde and offloading?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one thing on the DoorDash, we can work to explore a onsite, like, I would call a locker-type system, like we do with, we have, all of our communities have an Amazon locker or Luxor locker system for postage and mail and packages. So we might be able to do something like that with a refrigerator and where they can drop it off. And a lot of those deliveries are also with scooters or bicycles, which, you know, we're not need that.
Okay. And then my last question, this might be for staff, not for the applicant, but on that, this overhead right here, this side of the platform, I believe, right now is a vacant lot.
No. No, that's the train station and platform area.
But the other side of it?
Oh, of, on the other side of the train tracks?
That's right.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And there's no, that is, has nothing to do with this development or anything ancillary to this development? There's no plans around that, whether it be for parking or anything? Okay.
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay. I didn't have any other clarifying questions. Any other commissioners? Okay. I believe we can go, thank you. I believe we can go to public comment then. How many speaker slips do we have?
We have seven.
Okay. Excellent.
We will start with Mr. Bob Plantold, following then Nicholas Nagel, please.
I'm Bob Plantold. I came to support this project partly because it's obvious this city, many cities, need to produce much more housing, that the numbers of jobs you produce far exceeds that of housing. But it's not just housing. What's not been stated in the staff report or by the project sponsor is, I will say, the current amenities that make this appealing and worthwhile, that within a very short walking distance, for families or for seniors, for anybody, there's a chain drugstore, Rite Aid, there's two chain supermarkets. On one side, Trader Joe's. On the other side, Safeway. There's also a post office nearby. I think that's important in terms of the benefits this project has of already existing infrastructure and services. Now, in addition, I'm going to say this helps promote walking and biking for those who can. I've been involved in walkability and pedestrian safety since 92 for over a quarter of a century, and I've gotten awards from MTC and from Caltrans for my work on education and safety activities within San Francisco and statewide, including slowing down the walking speed so that seniors or parents pushing babies in strollers and people with toddlers can get across safely. I think it's important to recognize that it's going to be safe to walk. There's going to be paths to walk around here. Now, separately and finally, we heard staff had concerns about the underground parking and the possibility of an extraordinarily long walk. You heard the sponsor say there was a way they could alter that, and that's consistent with ideas I've had, because I've been consultant on projects where we had to alter the project or where I had to butt in and say, this ain't working. So staff is already showing an interest, willingness to alter their parking plan, and I applaud that. So the concern staff had shouldn't be seen as a deal breaker. There's ways the parking can be modified separate from what the project sponsor said, but please keep in mind, there's many people who can benefit from this. I'm on Caltrain, Caltrain's Accessibility Advisory Committee, and that's why I looked into whether there's Caltrain plans for any changes. No. I'm not saying this group took any position. I'm just trying to say I had information, able to talk to Caltrain staff. I'm also on High-Speed Rails Advisory Committee for San Mateo and San Francisco. And so even though it won't stop there, one could easily take the more frequent Caltrain to a northbound or a southbound high-speed rail station. And that's important for anybody who lives there or currently lives in the neighborhood to quickly get to something that can then get them faster into San Francisco, faster down to San Jose, and maybe, please God, eventually, you know, through the Central Valley and down on into LA and maybe even San Diego. But to start with, you need housing. This is a benefit, and I think that the pedestrian bike capacity is worth bringing into this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Nicholas Nagel, followed by Mr. Jonathan Irwin-Frank.
Good evening, commissioners, project team, folks of San Mateo. My name is Nicholas Nagel. I'm a 24-year-old representing the Sam, sorry, the Bay Area Housing Advocacy Coalition. Bay Area, BayHack was born out of the San Francisco Housing Action Coalition, which is now a 20-year-old nonprofit, working to create more homes for people across the Bay Area. The reason we believe in this mission is we are in the midst of a 40-year housing shortage. We simply haven't built enough homes for people. That has resulted in affordability crises, displacement crises, and the like. No, with that urgency in mind, no one project can solve this issue, but 189 units near a Caltrain station, right on top of a Caltrain station, are a pretty good first step. That's why these, that's why this project matters. So I know there's going to be no decisions made here tonight officially, but I do want to reinforce the urgency that this project has. With that being said, I think the project team also took into account necessities of the Bay Area. We're looking at affordability crises. They put in more affordable units than were required and put in 12 missing-middle units. That's, that's huge. That's not something you see on your average project, I assume. At least in the projects I've seen across the Bay Area, that's, that's not typical. So we want to applaud the project team for that. Beyond that, I think it's important to consider that because these units are right on top of a Caltrain station, that makes their location a primary sustainability feature. I know we're all Californians. We all think of ourselves as, as, as green proponents. This is how you do it. The Turner Center has it in writing. This is the top thing you can do beyond solar, beyond driving a hybrid. So that's another reason that this project is way ahead of the curve. Lastly, I just want to say, this, this project, it, it brings a little over $7 million, in my understanding, of impact fees. I know that's not a number that, you know, it's a requirement. It's not a number that, that the community typically hears. It's not a number that is supposed to matter, quote unquote, but that's, that's nothing to sneeze at, and it contributes directly to the community. The last thing I want to say, just super quickly, taking off my BayHack hat. Again, I'm a 24-year-old. I'm from the Bay Area. I see the same data that you guys do, and I'm worried about being able to live here again. So, you know, again, no decisions being made tonight, but I just want to reinforce that urgency across the region and in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jonathan Irwin-Frank, followed by Mr. Paul Krupka.
I just want to start by thanking the commissioners and Mr. Brennan for your presentation and for getting my letter into that packet on such short notice. I appreciate that. And to the city attorney as well. I know we're creating a little bit more work for y'all, but we obviously feel very strongly about this. So I wanted to start by saying I agree with so much of what was said by Ken from Saris Regis and so many others here today. We are in an affordable housing crisis. The jobs-housing balance is something that is affecting all of us. But I want to ask a somewhat different question, which is, I 100% believe we have to have housing on this project. The question is, housing for whom? So I don't know if folks know that in 2019, the area median income in San Mateo County, I believe, is $136,800. That means that when you're talking about, quote-unquote, "very low income," those people could be the teachers that are teaching our kids, right? They could be nurses, you know, and that's not even talking about the janitors, the home care workers, all the other people that need a place to live. And it would be one thing to me if this were a project on a private piece of land, but this is taxpayer-funded public property. And that's exactly what I think the state had in mind with something like the Surplus Land Act, to say, public land for public good. At a time when land is the key ingredient so much of the time for getting affordable housing built, we can't afford to forego these kinds of projects, again, for our teachers, for our nurses, for the people that take care of us and that make our communities possible. You know, I don't want to go too into the weeds on the legal arguments. I will say that we feel very strongly that, that we have a strong case here, that it's a case that could be litigated, and there are certainly other cases in California, one in LA and one in San Jose that have been litigated. And that is certainly something that we hope doesn't happen. Again, that's why in the letter, we propose an option willing to work with this developer. What we really want to see is the most units possible for all of those people that we need in our communities. And that's why, you know, we reached out to Caltrain about this a year ago. We're still hoping that we can work constructively with all of the parties here. Again, we want to do what we can about this crisis, and we want to keep in mind everyone, those, quote-unquote, "very low-income" teachers, and then all of the other people, the working-class folks, the poor people, the people who are struggling and suffering the most because of this crisis.
Mr. Paul Krupka, followed by Mr. Rich Hedges. Mr. Paul Krupka, followed by Mr. Rich Hedges.
Good evening, Chair Etheridge and the Planning Commission members, members of staff. I'm Paul Krupka, a 30-year resident of San Mateo. I'm also a professional transportation engineer, registered as a traffic and civil engineer in California, and have nearly 40 years of experience. I support this project and look forward to its evolution as it goes forward in the development review and approval process. To me, the project appears to be thoughtfully designed to complement the rail corridor TOD plan and the Hayward Park Station TOD overlay zone. The inclusion of 15% below-market rate units is critical, as noted by many others, and most appreciated. I feel very strongly that we need more homes, and this happens to be a great opportunity to provide more homes. The project's proximity to the Caltrain station, existing residential and commercial, as well as retail land uses, and new residential and office developments, complement the emerging TOD in the whole rail corridor area. I support staff's concerns and advice about the importance of proper analysis of the implications of parking and traffic, primarily thinking about mobility and accessibility, especially involving pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit riders, and considering both existing and future conditions. I think it's a good project, worthy of your consideration, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Rich Hedges, followed by Mr. Robert Whitehair.
Seems to be someone, Rob. Chair Etheridge and Commission members, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to use an automobile acronym for myself. I tend to look to the future through the windshield, not as many people my age do through the rearview mirror. I'm not going to talk about the need for housing, you're all intelligent people, you know that. But I will tell you that I believe this is the right place to put housing. I use that station as the other two stations in San Mateo and many other stations along Caltrain. I can get anybody in this city to any destination in the region by doing proper planning. It is not as thin on transportation for the public as many car-centric people believe it is. So, and this is one of the better spots. I recently was at the station in the middle of the afternoon, about 2:30, there were 24 people, believe it or not, 24 people waiting on the train and four cars in the parking lot. Since the first 57 units were leased at Station Park Green, the boardings at that station went up 52% in the last count. So it is being used, and I will have to admit, a couple times I have parked there, but I've been known to walk the mile point one to the station as well. But I want to talk to you a little bit about the human angle on building this housing. I attend a lot of public meetings, and I listen to a lot of people, and some of the stories really tug at your heart. The young woman from Ohio, from Akron, who said, "There was nothing there for me, so I came to California and I have a good job on the peninsula, I can't find a place to live. I'm living at the will of other people on their couches." I heard of an apartment, I called, it was available, and on the way on BART, I was told it was rented, and she was in tears when she talked about this. I have a friend who struggled to get home health care workers for her mother. One, I tried to map an area out, it was one gentleman from Daly City, but it was three transfers and a long trip, so he declined the job. The second person she hired, I, head of the Neighborhood Watch Program on the east side of the city, and I was called about a homeless person living in Harbertown in her car. It was the woman's home health care worker, and she was homeless. She did her showers and her clothes in her clients' homes when they weren't home. And so, and as far as businesses, one of my neighbors has a physical therapy business. She's losing a physical therapist. She called me and said, "Please help me find someplace for her to live." I reached out to people, I know that rent rooms, there was one possibility, all of the people I knew, and I'm not quite clear on what happened with that, in fact, I don't know. So I'm just giving you human examples of why we need to build this and many other projects. So thank you very much for listening to me. I'm going to leave the details up to you because that's what you've been hired for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. Mr. Robert Whitehair, please, and following Ricky McGlashan.
Mr. Chairman Etheridge and the Honorable Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding the Hayward Park project. I wanted to comment, first of all, Saris Regis, in my working career, I had a lot of opportunity to work with architects and developers and landlords leasing properties. And they are a high-caliber, very well-thought-out project, and I looked at all the project plans, went through them in great detail, as I did in my professional career. I'm very impressed with what they've come up with. Of course, the but of that is, I think there are two flaws in this project, and one of them has to do with the amount of affordable housing, and the other one has to do with the amount of parking. Saris Regis has included just 16 very low-income units in this proposal. But San Mateo has a regional housing needs allocation requirements to build 800 units over an eight-year period. We've fulfilled only 5.7% of that, which is 49 of 800 units that are required. That's as of the 2018 progress report. So they proposed to build 16, that's less than 2% of the need, to me, just not enough. Also, parking is insufficient, and I speak to this not just for the neighborhoods around Hayward Park, but also my own neighborhood. I live not too far from rural middle school, and I had the experience, I was lucky enough to live in New York for six years recently, and we rode the subway almost all the time. But when we had to park our car, we sometimes had to park our car a mile away from the station just to get a place to park our car, and then remember where we parked it when we got off. There are 300 bedrooms in this proposal, but only 251 parking spaces. Where would all these people park along with their guests? Where are all the Caltrain riders that park, the few that use that station or the lot now? Caltrain, as you know, is projecting a increase of tripling from 65,000 riders now to 200,000 riders by the year 2040. The answer to where they're going to park is all the neighborhoods, and I'm afraid they might even spin over into my neighborhood, even though I live about half a mile away. This has to be dealt with. I read, like I said, I read the staff report and all the letters, and I'm very impressed with what Saris Regis has done. It comes through loud and clear that they have spent a lot of money and time putting this project together. It comes through loud and clear that they expect to build this, and by the letters that I saw in the staff agenda, they have the legal right to do so. Despite the serious traffic concerns, despite the serious lack of adequate affordable homes, unfortunately, this project has to be changed before it goes forward. I respectfully request major revisions by adding more very low-income units and parking spaces if it is to be brought back to the Commission. And I also like to say that I attended the Marriott presentation, where they also made a presentation, and a lot of the homeowners were there, and I'm surprised they're not here tonight. I encourage them to get involved in this process now, not when it gets to the city council, which I think is too late. I also encourage them to get involved in a general plan process, which won't impact, this will not impact this project, but will impact other projects that are coming in the future. So with that, I say thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehair. Ricky McGlashan, please, and then follows Jordan Grimes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I, like everyone, am very pleased to see a major development going in with housing. But because this has public land involved in it, it seems like the perfect location to put all low-income housing, all very low-income housing. It would be an inspiring demonstration, and it would just incrementally bring the city closer to their self-proclaimed goal, or the state-mandated goal of more very low-income housing. We can't keep valuing income from developers and whatever in the city. We have to manage somehow for all the people who are, even to staff the big buildings that are going there, you know, to work in all of the low-income jobs that are nearby. Secondly, I think it's just crazy not to have some train parking. I mean, to wipe out a whole park, it's never been full, I go through there all the time, I get that, but none seems crazy. The other thing I want to say is, there is a lot happening at that intersection between the Station Green and Passages, and now this. I, as a resident of the city, would like to just say, take a breath, we have no idea how we're going to handle the traffic at that already terrible intersection of Delaware and Norfolk and 92. I mean, we've all been through it, and it's a nightmare. And when Station Park gets filled up, and all those businesses get filled up, and then we add all these more, it's like, let's see what happens with Station Park. Let's just slow this down. So thank you for considering my point of view.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGlashan. Follows Mr. Jordan Grimes, and after, last speaker, Holly Hewitt.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a lifelong resident of 19th Avenue Park, so literally right across from the Hayward Park Station. I've used it pretty much my entire life. I'm here in support of the project. There are a couple things that I'd just like to suggest to make the project a little bit better. There's currently being provided 233 parking spots. That's a ton of parking, and in fact, it's considerably more, I think 91 spots more than the developer is required to provide. Given the price per stall of parking in the Bay Area, that's easily another $4 to $5 million that could be used to build some of the affordable housing that we're talking about here tonight. So I want to make that strong recommendation that we reduce that down from 233 spots to, I think it's 141. As a 19th Avenue Park resident, as someone who takes the train, who takes his bike everywhere, I do sort of want to address some of the parking concerns that I saw in the letters that my neighbors have made, that some of my neighbors have made. The cars at Hayward Park Station right now are almost entirely from Station Park Green contractors. If you go there during the day, it's Station Park Green contractors, that's who's parking there. Prior to Station Park Green breaking ground, there were maybe two, three cars in that parking lot. I also, I don't understand the particular note that, I don't think that intersection's that bad. I mean, I know other people do, I get that. But considering that we live in a major metropolitan area, I think that's just what, you know, if you're going to do that, you have to be accepting of some of that. Especially given electrification's timeline, this project is really exciting. People are going to be able to take the train a couple times an hour, that's something to really look forward to. I do hope that Caltrain will work, as the attorney from Klespa said, will work further with the developer, will work with Saris Regis to get more affordable housing built on the site. So thank you for your time tonight, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holly Hewitt, please, and Drew to follow.
Hello, Planning Commission. My name is Holly Hewitt. I'm a 60-year resident of the city of San Mateo, and one of my main concerns is the loss of public parking. There's no public parking offered in this project, and I wondered if that, hearing the presentation, that that might have had to do with this issue with the water and how it's being used passively versus having uncovered parking, or whether that piece would be covered by Caltrain if there were to be additional parking uncovered in the project. But I've many times walked from my home on the west side of El Camino with dragging a suitcase to go to the train to take it to Milbrae, to take it to the airport, and I've also just parked my car there so that if I was going into the city in the evening, I wouldn't have to walk through the darkened streets at night. So I'd like to see there be some sort of parking still available for people who want to drive there and take the train. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hewitt. Drew, please come up to the podium, and then Adam Lorraine, final speaker.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. So what I'm going to say is not going to be, quote, "against" this project, but I just am struggling with, we're designing for what's there today versus what could be or will be there in like 15 years. The Caltrain business plan proposes potentially passing tracks through this zone. The increased train lengths drive a platform length that needs to be longer than the current platform, and high-speed rail slash Caltrain with those passing tracks and stuff will change the turns in there to make them so the trains can go faster and get through that zone. So the station that's aligned and being shown is not the station that will exist at some point in the future. Because the platform needs to be longer, at some point, they'll take out the crossing gates for the getting across as they're slowly working through redoing stations, and so you're either going to have to go up or down to get from one side to the other. Where's the space to build those stairs, to go up or go down, or the ramps, things like that? So, yeah, it's just how to incorporate, because right where the buildings are divided, and that's lining up, that ending point is a false endpoint. The turn will change where the platforms end and stuff, that will change. And so the whole building, where it's at, that won't align to what things are going to be like in 15 or 20 years. And it's coming, I mean, the whole business plan's coming. So I just wish there's a way to evaluate that and somehow incorporate that in these talks about, well, everyone's going to drive to Hillsdale. Well, with all of this, the Hillsdale 500's parking spaces are going to get wiped out. We have to build a parking garage or something there because all that parking is where the passing tracks are going to go. That's what the design was. So I don't know what the right parking amount is at Hayward Park, but it just seems like zero, might not be the right number, because it's a chicken and egg. There's not a lot of people using it because the service sucks. Once there's electrification, and once there's four tracks, the service can like phenomenally get better and stuff. So as far as the particular design itself, you know, I just struggle with some of the comments about people are going to drop off on Concorde and walk all the way back, and the Uber drivers, and the DoorDash, and all that. I don't think that's what's going to happen when Uber drivers stop, double-park in the middle of streets currently and stuff. I don't think that's a realistic promise someone can make and stuff. So, yeah, and then I just think on the, just a couple of those renderings, they're not accurate. They have a rendering showing the platform in the middle, and I forget what they're calling that walkway to Station Park. They don't show the crossing gates that are there, they don't show the fencing that's there. That beautiful rendering isn't reality of what that's going to look like even today because there's going to be crossing gates at the tracks, so you don't, and there's fencing all through that. And then the rendering at Concorde, at the entrance, Concorde is not that wide there. There's not space to have three cars and parking and all that. That's not a real, the building itself can be realistic, but the driveway in front of it, that's just not what exists and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Mr. Adam Lorraine.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name's Adam Lorraine, I'm a 20-ish-year resident of San Mateo. I'm very happy to be here, and thank you very much for this presentation and this public hearing. I've heard a lot of great public comments tonight, so I'm not going to offer a ton, and I'm going to try to make it very brief. I'm just going to plus one on a lot of the comments that referred to, of course, being supportive of transit-oriented development, affordable housing, and extra density in these areas. But there were several comments about whether there could have been more affordable housing here, this is a special project, which appears to have special circumstances, and I apologize for being a little out of the loop. I haven't heard or read everything related to this project, but as a layman who has come in and seen this public presentation, I can't help but wonder, could this have been another mid pen, right? The city of San Mateo, of course, on that land, it's different circumstances, but that was a 100% affordable project. And when, as another person commented, we hardly ever see developers offering more than the absolute low, bare minimum requirement of low-income housing. Well, I think if this had come before the city council in Well, I, I think if this had come before the city council in the Kinko's Development, when compared against the Mid-Penn and other public nonprofit institutions that were offering something in that development, it would not have passed muster. So I'm just hoping that the Planning Commission is, in the spirit of making sure San Mateo meets its RENA guidelines, for example, and just trying to make it a more affordable place, is doing everything it can to see what's, what, what questions can be asked about that I'll just leave that there. And then, when, with regard to ride-and-share parking, I am just a little surprised again as a layman to see zero, and I, I was a little disappointed that the applicant didn't seem to mention that tonight after the staff seemingly made a big deal out of it. And most importantly, if it's going to be an issue that prevents this from being something that the Planning Commission would maybe be able to approve, because it would be a shame if something like this were to get in the way of an otherwise affordable housing project that we definitely need. So I, I'm hoping that more conversation is going to see what we can do about that. I do sort of wonder, could this inadvertently prevent Hayward Park Caltrain Station from getting regular service and being just as important as Hillsdale and the downtown Caltrain stations? I, I agree with, you know, Drew, I don't know exactly how many spaces we need, but I'm, I'm guessing that zero might make it difficult for it to be just as useful and usable as the other stations, and I think that would be against the spirit of what we're trying to do here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We have a last speaker, Ms. Nori Jaba, please.
Good evening, I'm Nori Jaba, and I am a consultant, and I work in affordable housing. And I just wanted to point out something that hasn't been said tonight, and it's really about the moderate-income housing. There is a severe shortage of moderate-income housing, and we really need more, so this project, I'm really excited that they are providing moderate. One thing that's really important to understand is that when you have a nonprofit housing provider, a developer that's doing 100% affordable, they don't do moderate. Moderate can only be done by the private sector. It can only be added by developers like Saris Regis, and not very many of them are doing moderate. So, we do a lot of, we see a lot of low, and in this project, we're having very low, which is wonderful, but I really appreciate that they've added, at their own doing, the 12 moderate units, and just wanted to point that out, how important that is. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all the speakers we have, Chair.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak and fill out a slip after? No? Okay. We'll close public comment. We have gotten a number of letters in addition too, so I do thank everybody who got up to speak during the study session, and we have gotten a number of written correspondence. Are there any, anything the staff wants to address or follow up on for clarification with regard to questions that were brought up by the, in the public comment?
None, none from the, stemming from the public comment.
I'm going to understand, at the beginning of the meeting, that there is someone from Caltrain here. Is there an opportunity for you to speak to some of the comments that were brought around two things specifically? One is the, you know, looking ahead, the size of the station and the layout, and the other is ridership projections. How is that trending? I know there may not be something official, but any, any kind of input you can give would be helpful.
Hi, thank you, Planning Commissioners. My name is Jessica Epstein, and I am with Caltrain. As to the station length, that is not actually something I'm an expert on. I do know our developer has been working extensively with our real estate department. We would certainly go back, look at that. The station lengthening is really in accordance with the electrification and the ability to purchase more trains, so I really don't have details on that, but it is something that we can look at and get back to you on. In terms of growth, right now, Caltrain is developing its business plan, and that is an overarching mega-planning study looking at the entire corridor and the growth of the corridor. And as you heard, staff is recommending a moderate-growth scenario, but even at moderate growth, we're looking from taking our current ridership, which is in the mid-60,000s, to well over 180,000, you know, almost tripling our ridership. And what we are doing in looking at that is looking at all growth projections, and I can tell you one thing, parking is not one of those. Parking is not coming into consideration, the amount of parking. For a parking perspective, we expect drivers to go to Hillsdale, which will always be one of our major hubs and have an immense amount of service. Hayward Park is in the, in the business plan, which is not a hard, you know, this is exactly the, this, what we're going to do. It is more of a conceptual design of the future. We'll have increased service, but what this project does is support what we do, which is provide transit. We love this project. It provides immense bicycle and pedestrian access. We're really trying to increase our bicycle access, particularly bike parking is very good for the train, because we have a limited amount of spots on each train for bicycles, so the ability to have this additional parking there will help actually alleviate crowding on the train by keeping bikes off and letting people on. And this station, we really see as a true bike-ped station. The residents, we anticipate, will be riders. It is an extremely underutilized parking lot at the moment, so we anticipate increased ridership from this plot of land, based on residential ridership as opposed to the existing parking ridership. So, again, we are very excited about this. It fits very much in alignment with Caltrain's goals. We are also very happy about the affordability component, and that the developer has gone above and beyond. For us, as a public entity, we have a primary mandate, which is to provide transit. Unfortunately, we do not have a dedicated source of funding. There isn't a tax that supports Caltrain, and so every bit of income that comes in helps offset the costs for us. So that's also a very exciting thing, that we were able to find a balance between revenue to support our transit, which is our primary mission, but also still help with the affordable housing crisis by providing a significant number of units, including both a very high number of affordable, very low affordable units, and, you know, what the developers bring to the table with the moderate-income unit. So, again, this is a really exciting project for us. It fits well within our future planning for the region, and, you know, I can't emphasize enough the bike-ped access and how great that is for us and, and how Caltrain is moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, so the ridership projection is a moderate growth projection of three times current, that's over what time horizon?
So it's Caltrain 2040, so we're looking at projections out to 2040, and so the business plan is designed around the 2040 projection, and the moderate growth, if you look at the business plan, is still quite a bit of growth from where we are today. With electrification alone, we'll see a significant increase, and if the board adopts the moderate growth and moves forward with that, you know, there'll be extensive studies, extensive EIRs, but that would see even more growth.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. The other item for staff, I appreciate Mr. Erwin Frank came up and spoke and referencing the letter that we all got from Community Legal Services. Can you clarify again for the Commissioners here, how that letter and the topic of it, how that impacts this study session for us as a Planning Commission, how we look at this project?
So, the purpose of this study session is to get facts that will help you make recommendations to the developer with the goal of ultimately allowing you to make the findings to approve the planning application, and the planning application is for site plan and architectural review. And so the topics that the Commission will be looking at are the findings for the site plan and architectural review, and I could read those into the record, it would be helpful, but you're probably all familiar with them already. So the Surplus Lands Act is not something that the Planning Commission will be weighing in on, just the, the SPAR findings.
Okay, excellent. Did any other, any other clarifying questions that came up from public comment?
I have a question for the applicant, several questions. So, when you were first looking at this project, did you ever consider digging down?
Yeah, yeah, we did, we did. There's a high-water table here, and the cost to dig down in that high-water table become very, very expensive. So we're really constrained on the bottom by the water table and up by the 50-foot height limit.
So when you say costs, there were huge costs, can you give me a percentage of how much more it would cost to dig down?
You know, I could see it costing upward of $100,000 a space, of a park, $100,000 per parking space, by the time you put do-watering in there and some other things that...
And none of the other surrounding buildings have underground parking, do they?
That is correct. Station Park Green's podium, so it's above-grade.
And is passages considering underground? I can't remember.
A, a small portion, but it's predominantly podium parking.
Yeah. I, I believe Station Park Green originally was designed with underground parking, and then it was changed to above-ground parking because of that. I know the office buildings have underground parking, and then some of the buildings, I, I heard, you guys will probably be able to speak to this more, but some of the buildings on the, the shopping center then had some settling associated with the change in the groundwater.
Yeah. Okay, and then, thank you.
Okay.
And then for Caltrain, when can we expect an answer to the questions that were raised tonight?
Is that regarding the station length?
The station size, the, I guess mostly the, the station size, and then the, if there are any changes in schedule, when those would be?
So I can answer schedule right now. We, at the time of electrification, which is currently set for 2022, we would be releasing new schedules. After that, it's about the business plan, which is a, going to be a many-year project, really dependent on what kind of infrastructure improvements there are, funding, things like that. So for the near term, it would be 2022, and then after that, it's a, quite frankly, nobody knows, but it would be as part of the implementation of the business plan and the phases that come after that. So that would be a much longer term. If you look at the conceptual approach for Hayward Park, it's two trains per hour is what the business plan is projecting.
And so the two trains per hour is driven by the developments that are going on in that area?
It's driven by a number of factors, developments along the entire corridor, station, I'm sorry, a whole bunch of technical stuff that I don't understand very well, but how, how the trains go, and which train needs to go in front of the other train, timing of the different trains. That's why it's still conceptual. Before they actually develop a new schedule, they would have to do an immense amount of really technical studies and determine, you know, if, it has to do with when improvements are made, such as track, passing tracks, all those kinds of things. That, again, is the long-term planning, that is, that is with the two trains per hour. I don't know what the plan is for electrification in 2022. I'm not sure that's been developed yet, but that would be the next time we'd see a concrete change to our schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Commissioner Ebner.
Through the, through the Chair. Couple of questions for staff. I think earlier in your presentation, you said that there were going to be 1.23 spaces per unit. That isn't per bedroom, it's per, per residence?
Per residence.
Okay. On page three of the staff report, there's talk about, or there's some language about stormwater treatment and the issue with that, and the, the use of low-impact development. So can some of that be alleviated with permeable driveways and/or roof plantings, or is that even part of the mix?
I'll defer again to Public Works Staff.
So yes, permeable driver, permeable driveways can be used, but it depends on the soil that's underneath, and then similarly, roof plantings can be used as well, like self-treating areas, but once again, it has to be evaluated.
Okay, thank you. On page four of the, of the staff report, talking about the plazas and the rail corridor plan guidance states that they should be at least 5,000 square feet, excuse me. And then on the, the data sheet, note number four, it says, while the rail corridor plan does encourage the provision of open space area, it does not specify private or common open space requirements. So, will that simply be a discussion point between staff and the applicant on the appropriate size, or will they be able to say, you're going to get 1,000 feet and that's it?
If I'm understanding your question correctly, I think the distinction being made in the, the factual data sheet is that the rail corridor plan doesn't provide specific guidance for, say, as an example, private open space, you know, 100 square feet per unit. It, it, as it relates to plazas, it does provide specific guidance that they should be no smaller than 5,000 square feet, but that's a should, not a shall.
Should, not a shall, right.
So, it, you know, I think Mr. Brennan is correct. You're probably used to an R3 zones on the data sheet, you might see it's, don't quote me on this, but 200 square feet for the first bedroom, 100 square feet, but there is no such calculation requirement in the TOD zone. And again, because it says should, that's an encouragement, but if it said shall, that's it. So I think as part of your deliberations on the site plan and architectural review and the findings that are provided, you know, certainly staff will be working with the applicant to provide an open space that not only meets the needs of the residents, but also anchors that corner, but that would be in the end up to the Commission to ultimately address. Okay, this seems to be efficient, sufficient, and meet the purposes of the rail corridor plan.
Great, thank you. One last question for staff. I know that when, when the AAA building was brought to us for approval, that there was some discussion that AAA was trying to work some type of a deal with Essex for access to the train station. Have these three separate parties been brought together to see if there's any way to make something like that happen?
I think that's a great idea. We have not brought all three, but we have not been successful in encouraging an agreement between the developer of the AAA building and the developer of the Station Park Green.
Okay.
So, we haven't gotten the two to, to agree. You know, perhaps we can take a look at three, but I think the probability is probably go down instead of up.
It's too bad, yeah.
But I do think, you know, one thing that we have been talking about is, given the number of developments in the area, from a circulation, pedestrian, bicycle standpoint, maybe there is a way that we can enhance coordination of the various projects.
That'd be great, thank you. I've got some questions for the applicant, please. So, during the public meeting, there was a comment made by your representative that the parking at 888 was considerably heavier than you need. Can you tell me how many parking spots you have there per bedroom, and how many are being used?
You know, I don't know it's how many per bedroom, it's about 1.6 per unit, and we did a count, actually, because we had to do some additional studies for the city to add a couple units, when the community was completely occupied with 158 apartments, and they were 100% occupied, and we came to about, we counted cars one evening, we had the city went out and hired a consultant to count the cars, and the result was about 1.2. That's my recollection, I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but that's about where it is.
Okay, and how close are they to a train station?
They are about a third of a mile from the Burlingame Train Station.
Okay, thank you. You also, somebody also stated in, in that public meeting that not only was there a high-water table restriction on parking, but there were other environmental conditions. Can you tell me what you mean by other environmental conditions?
There's, there's some lead in the soil and some other things, so we would work with the county before we received a building permit to get the all-clear, a county or another, another agency to accomplish that.
Okay, so whatever soils that you disturbed... Okay. So whatever soils that you disturb, you're telling me that you're going to be working through lead procedures?
Yeah, so we work, I'm not sure which agency it would be, but it would be the DTSC or the Regional Water Quality Control Board or the county.
Okay, so no matter what garage or not, you're going to be dealing with lead?
No, no, no. You don't have to dig down that deep. If we're building it at grade, then we don't have...
So there's already been a soils report showing you the location of lead on this site?
There's a soils report that shows the environmental condition of the site.
Okay. And lead is subsurface, it's not on top?
Yeah, yes, yeah. It's under, this, I mean, yes. I believe that's, it's, there is stuff three, a couple of feet down.
A couple of feet down?
Yeah.
Which your foundations will penetrate, so.
Some of the footings might, some of the footings might, but for when we do our mass excavation, we won't.
Okay.
And if we do, if we do remove anything, we'll dispose of it appropriately.
Okay, thank you. Why are, why are you proposing to have 65% more parking than is required?
You know, we've built a number of homes, a number of apartments, and we, especially at our transit locations, we expect 1.2 is a good number for us. We need to get the community financed, and that's something that some of our financing sources look for, is the amount of parking spaces.
Even though you stated tonight that you expect a ridership for commutes to be 50, between 50 and 70%?
Yeah. So what'll happen is people will use that ridership for their work commute, but they might also own a car for off-work type things.
Okay. Will the parking be bundled?
You know, what we like to do is charge a small amount for the parking of, let's say, $25, and then we can adjust that. But we like to charge for parking so that people don't take a parking space that they're not using and just hold on to it.
Okay. I did not notice in your sustainability chart any mention of being 100% electric building. That is not codified by the City of San Mateo yet, although they're working on it multifamily. Are you thinking about going all-electric there?
You know, with the boiler systems, so it's a little bit more than a hot water heater for a single-family home, but the boiler systems are fairly complex issue items, and those are typically gas. So it's really the hot water. That's the big, that's the element that we would use the gas for. I don't anticipate that we would use the gas ranges or anything else in the units, but the boiler for the hot water would be one thing that we wouldn't intend to use gas for.
Okay. I also noticed that you said you're using prevailing wages. Is that something that would tie in with organized labor, or how does that work?
You know, the state has a prevailing wage rate, and we would, and all of our contractors would be paying that prevailing wage rate to their contracting staff.
So what's the difference between organized labor and prevailing wage? I don't understand. Why would you pick between one or the other?
You know, we have, in some communities, we do build, we commit to a union build, and in South San Francisco, we're building with you, and in other communities, we do not. In this community, we'll be paying prevailing wage rates.
Okay. For your parking, had you considered using any mechanized parking solutions?
You know, we had, we've looked at, we've thought about that a little bit. There are some constraints, specifically the height limit might be a challenge for us, because I think we're at 54 feet, and the height limit is 55 feet. If we use those parking lifts, we would need to raise the garage up, and that might potentially put us higher than that 55 feet.
So what I think we've seen a solution to that in other locations is possibly the garage is depressed maybe four or five feet rather than the full 10 or 12 feet.
And that, and as I said, that we would run the risk of the high groundwater table at that point, and, you know, that would really increase construction costs.
Okay. I've seen the groundwater solution used. In fact, the city is going to start building, or they're looking to build a facility over in the San Mateo County grounds parking lot, and they're going to go down, I know, 40 or 50 feet, and they've come up with some pretty innovative ways to address the water table. Mr. Jordan Grimes had, I think, a very valid point, which was if you were to reduce your parking cost, you may be able to use some of those funds for some more affordable housing units. Your number of $100,000 for a subterranean parking spot is accurate, as far as we've been told recently, that is pretty much the number. But I would think that if you went down a partial floor and were able to use some mechanized parking, you might save yourself some money. Have you, I was, have been involved with some other public land debates or issues where there has been a lot of pressure put on the developers to increase their affordability, and you've already gone above and beyond with your numbers. Thank you. Is there some discussion going on between you and different organizations that are pushing for more affordability, or is that even part of the discussion?
I believe that we're making a very significant contribution to address the affordability by providing those moderately priced homes. We came out of the gate, it wasn't a negotiating ploy, where we started with zero so we could get to 12. We offered our best foot forward, and that's our best foot forward. That's what we can do.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
That was it.
We're going to take a quick five-minute break, and then we will go to Commissioner Maldonado to continue commission credits. I apologize, just a five-minute break.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. We'd like to reconvene the meeting. Before we go to Commissioner Maldonado's clarifying questions, Philip had one item he wanted to mention.
Yeah, just as a point of correction, I have it on record, the projected moderate growth increase in levels of service is four trains per hour at Hayward Park Station, not two, as was previously stated.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Maldonado.
We can start off with the representative from Caltrain. Quick question. Does Caltrain have a number of, any data to show that shows the number of individuals who actually use the Hayward parking lots?
Um...
On a daily basis compared to before Street Park Green construction usually being now? So historically, how many spaces of the 235, 220, the 225 stalls that were currently going to remove, how many of those were used on a daily basis?
Are you saying, so you're talking about the stalls?
Yes, the stalls.
As opposed to actual riders?
Yes, riders, yes. Just parking stalls.
So we, as part of this process, count will need to be done, you know, we've done some casual counts that show a very, very low usage. Most of the people parking there, as has been said, are using it for the local construction or local businesses and not actually to support transit.
So there's not a historical number that says, you know, it's on a daily basis. Before construction, 20 stalls were used on a daily basis during the weekend, 20 or 25 were used in the weekend.
That's not something that we, you know, count systematically throughout the system. I'm not sure what has been done over the course of the history of this specific project. That's where the information would be coming, probably mostly from our, from Sarah's reaches.
Okay, thank you.
If I could jump in really quickly, the Caltrain Business Plan 2040 shows a current park and ride rate of 12% at the Hayward Park Station.
A question for the applicant. Can you pull up the first level floor plan? So, um, yeah, so you have it here that the park, the entrance to the parking lot on Concorde will be entered through this area, correct?
Yes.
So this is the only entrance and exit from the parking lot itself, from the first floor?
That's correct.
So individual, so if we, if you have individuals on an early morning commute leaving Caltrain, using this corridor here, so how is that, how does that infect individuals of the 200 parking spaces that you have here, individuals going to work, having to cross pedestrian individuals on the plaza itself there? Was that, so did you look at other different areas for to have cars enter and exit the garage besides this plot, besides this area here that crosses the, one of your plazas here?
You know, we have not done, we anticipate that will be done as part of the traffic analysis when we, with the, with the application. So that's when we'll be evaluating, that we'll be evaluating that. We do not believe there'll be a, that will, that will impact the number of cars, but that is something that will be studied as part of the process.
Okay. And you, you said earlier that you, you do have an understanding that you do, that you do have more parking space than what's actually needed. Have you ever thought about having some public parking station, parking spaces to be used for the public, for individuals who are riding Caltrain?
Well, we, we believe we need 1.2 spaces per unit, and that's fundamentally what we're providing.
Okay. And under, in your floor plan, I'm, I'm seeing from your floor, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth floor, those are majority on your building B, those are majority one and two bedroom, two bedroom units.
Correct. So in here, I have a total that on second, from second floor to your fifth floor, you have nine one-bedroom and eight two-bedroom units on those specific floors. So for a total of 65 one and two bedrooms, which is a total of 34% of your residential units in building two, have you looked at a way how to provide maybe some type of underground connection for individuals leaving the parking lot and going into building two? If you have a majority of one or two bedrooms, which are historically more family-friendly for a family of four or for a family of six of individuals, so to be able to have them not leave building one, go outside from any, there's, can be weather issues or things like that and, or just issues with individual ridership and people using that plaza, but you're having other means of individuals going from building A to building B? Besides just leaving the lobby area and walking down the plaza and going into lobby area to the second building? You mean, walking outside?
Yes.
Okay. We have done that in a number of other communities. We did it very successfully. Actually, a community I worked with, with John in Palo Alto, where people come out of the garage, they need to walk on, on, we call it a podium, but it's open to the sky to their home. So we do, we have done it in a number of communities. And, you know, we will provide, yes, we have done it in a number of communities.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Williams.
Yes, I have a few questions. The first question is for the Caltrans representative, or maybe it would be for either of you, I guess, but, so you mentioned revenue from the project for Caltrain, so is that specifically the revenue from the lease hold?
Yes.
Okay, and that's a 100-year lease, I think I read?
Yes.
Okay. I guess it's, a couple of other questions I have for the applicant then. So on the question of setbacks, I see on the, on the data form, or the data sheet, it says that, so my concern is on the right side, the Station Park Green setback, or the side of the building, I guess that's a side setback, and although it says 10 feet buffer for side setbacks, and it says varies 10 to 15 feet, I guess I wanted to just confirm that. It seemed unclear to me on the site plan what the setback is. It seems...
The required setback, the actual setback?
The actual.
I, I would need to check the drawings and see.
Well, and the reason I ask is because in looking at the shadow studies, you know, for instance, at 6 o'clock on the Summer Solstice, for instance, it shows shadowing up to the adjacent building, the, what's it called?
Do you have the project lines? No, I mean, on the, for the screen. Okay.
Well...
I'm sorry, I was just trying to pull the...
Okay.
Your question, what you said?
So, I guess is, is there an opportunity to increase that setback, that distance from the adjacent building?
This is in building, building B?
Well, both of them, but particularly building A, the one with the parking. I think that's building A, right?
Yes.
Yeah, building A. Both, I mean, both of them show that the shadows go right up to the adjacent, what's the adjacent building called? The adjacent development?
Station Park Green.
Thank you, Station Park Green, there it is. So, I guess, is there an opportunity to, you know, increase that setback, or are you, are you right at the?
We're pretty much, it's a pretty constrained site.
Yeah.
So we really don't have that much more space to play with.
Okay. So I guess I would be interested in seeing even further detail on this, on this shadow study, just how it affects that neighboring...
Which, which shadow study, which, which one are you looking at?
So I'm looking, like, for instance, it's sheet A16.
Okay, the Summer Solstice?
The, the Summer Solstice, yeah, at 6:00 PM, you know, at, you know, I mean, it's still, it's still light out till 9:00 PM on the Summer Solstice, or roughly.
Yeah.
So, you know, those units all along that, that adjacent development are going to be in shadow from this building. And if they were reduced, if they were increased, if the distance was increased a little bit, which I understand, particularly with building B, it's pretty difficult.
Yeah.
This is a very creative, challenging site, and you've been very creative with the project. But, but given the fact that that's, you know, 6 o'clock on June 21st, it's still got three more hours of sunlight.
Yeah, what we're really trying to do is, is make that pedestrian experience on the west side of the building as, as large as possible, and, and celebrate that, and then also maintain the EVA on that side. So it would be a huge challenge to move the building to encroach on that EVA.
Okay.
So that would have a very significant impact on, on the overall community.
Well, I do think that the shade would have a significant impact on the adjacent buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
As well. So, so then the other question I had for you is, oh, I know, let's see. My question is about the plaza that is at the Concar Drive end, that's 1,000 square feet.
Yes.
Instead of the guideline of the 5,000 square feet per the guidelines. Does that 1,000 square feet include the, the drive, I forget what you're calling it, the drive for the EVA? Or is that?
No, it would not.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess that's it. The only other thing I would just ask is, were there, are there any units with balconies? In looking at the floor plans, it looked like there were a couple that had balconies, a couple of the styles?
There are a number, there are a number of units that have balconies.
Pardon me?
Yes, the R.
Okay.
The R.
Great. Okay. Okay, that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you. My only additional question should be for staff, is are we aware of any other Caltrain stations that do not have public parking on the site?
We are not aware of any.
So this would be the only one that we know of?
Offhand, yes. 22nd Avenue, I don't think has a dedicated parking lot, but there is parking available nearby. And I think that Atherton is out of service, but that also does not have parking. But again, I believe that that's out of service.
Okay.
It does?
Yes.
Okay.
We believe Atherton Station does have parking. Okay. Okay, I had no other clarifying questions. So if we want to put up the items for comment for the commissioners, we will go to final comments, and we'll start again with Commissioner Williams.
Great. Wait till they come up. Great. Well, I wanted to start by saying that I, I understand it's a very challenging site, and, and it's, you know, kudos to you for, for, for fitting as much as you do on this site in, in the manner that you did. It's, yeah, it's a really funny little site. So I really also, I also just wanted to comment that I really appreciated all the public comments because they were, and the letters as well, they're very, a lot of, a lot of very good points were made. So, so with regards to the item number one, I think that the site circulation and access is really creative. I like the access to the, to the train station. I think there's a lot of benefits to that. I feel that the parking for the park and ride users is important. I think that, you know, some of the, some of the parking that you've shown could be designated for public parking. Certainly, underground parking could be considered. I understand it's a high water table, and, you know, and it's just expensive to do. But I think that could be done. I, I do see that it's not feasible to put parking under the other building. You're, you've got a pretty limited footprint for, you know, all the requirements of a parking, parking lot. But I, I feel strongly that there should be some accommodations for the general public to park on the site because there's always been some, unless there's real strong evidence that there's, you know, if, if there was a study done or something that there really aren't, is, that it's really not used by people for Caltrain. I, I also feel, in terms of the site, the use of the site, I think that the plazas, I, I think it's, I commend you for fitting so much onto the site, but at the same time, I think that it's a little bit crowded. I think we're crowding the adjacent Station Park Green structures, and I think that the other area that I just asked about, the plaza, you know, it's way below the recommended amount for a plaza. I guess when you look at combining them, maybe that's how, maybe that's what we, how we should consider it, but I guess I would like to see a little bit more space there to make it really more of an entry at that kind, that corner. That is a very visible part, and 1,000 square feet is, is not that big. So, and that would, I think, address some of my other concerns. So in terms of the building design, though, I really like the street side of the, of the, of the development. I think it's, I think the materials, the use of materials and the articulation of that, of that elevation of that side of the building makes a lot of sense, makes it interesting from the, probably from the freeway to some extent, I guess, and certainly to the, to people's passing by. I think you've got the same thing going on along building A, along the one side. Building B doesn't have any of that, and maybe it's because it's, the site is so narrow there, but I guess, it's not that it doesn't have any of it, but it's, it's reduced, it's much simplified. And so I guess, I guess I'd be interested in seeing a little bit more articulation along the facade of that building, of building B, so that it kind ties into building A in a similar manner. That was really my comments. Oh, in terms of the compliance with the Surplus Land Act and some of the specifics of that, I did like the comment, or I guess one suggestion that I think was made at some point, was that the other side of the tracks is an opportunity to develop or provide some more open space for, you know, there's so many residents that will be in this area between this project and the adjacent projects. You know, it would be nice to see the other side of the platform be developed into some kind of open space area. I'm not sure who's, if that's a Caltrans property or not, but, I mean, Caltrain property. So, so generally, it's a very intriguing project. I think I'm a little concerned about the shadows and the shade. But yeah, I guess that's my comments.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Mallory.
I didn't think this through in this format, so I'm going to be kind of all over the place.
Freelance.
Oh, freelance. I looked at pros and cons for the project, so I'm going to start off with the pros. I really like the location, that it is right on the transit corridor. It is close to both the train station and the freeway. You couldn't ask for a better location to, to put housing. I appreciate how many units it's adding, especially the very low income and the voluntary moderate housing. And I'm very glad to see the two and three bedrooms for families with children, because a lot of times, they're left out of the mix. So I very much appreciate seeing those added into the mix. It's a very difficult strip of land, but I, I think you did a good job of laying things out on that, on that triangle. As far as the cons go, I, I'm not okay with eliminating the train station parking. To me, that's, that's a major red flag. I don't think that eliminating that parking will serve our east side residents, and I also think that there may be fewer riders now because you have one train an hour. As soon as you up that number of trains per hour, people are going to be more amicable to using that train station. And then you're going to have to have more parking, which is then going to be gone. Maybe a reduced parking in that area, but I do not think eliminating it completely is a positive thing. I'm worried about the surrounding neighborhoods and cars being pushed into the neighborhoods. I think there's a domino effect there. The way it's set up where the parking for the community is underbuilding it, underbuilding A with none underbuilding B, and most of the three bedrooms being in building B, I think makes it very, very difficult. Am I wrong? Okay, where am I wrong on that?
They're in, they're in building A.
The three bedrooms are?
Yes.
The two bedrooms are in building B?
There's some two bedrooms.
Hold on, let me cock this here.
A5.
That's okay. Okay, two bedrooms. Okay, I'm going to revise my comment. What concerns me about having the parking all in one building is, let's say you have a two-bedroom with a family with young kids, and you go to the grocery store. Do you take your groceries into the house and leave your kid in the car? Or do you take your kid and put them alone into the apartment and then go get your groceries? So to me, that is a real problem in dealing with the long strip of land with the parking on one end. You, you're, you have a funny look, tell me what you're thinking. Tell me what you're thinking.
As I said, we have a community in Palo Alto.
Yeah.
You know, the public hearing is closed. Did the commissioner want a reop?
I'm sorry, all right. I'm sorry, my, my bad. Anyway, that is a concern to me on where they're going along, along distance from their car to their apartment. Where people are going to queue up in short-term parking is being eliminated there in the center, and they're going to be parking along Concar, DoorDash, delivery trucks, and then residents, because one of my questions earlier was, who will be allowed to park in that center spot? Will there be short-term parking in that center spot? And you said no. So to me, that's a concern of nowhere for them to go short-term, designated short-term, and then not having an emergency vehicle be able to get in or whatever. So that, that's a concern. And I think that's, oh, and... And I think that's, oh, and the LID treatment. I would like to see the community try to do that kind of biome rather than the mechanized filtering system, if that can possibly be done. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Maldonado.
Through the chair. Um, so can we go back to the slide that has the summary and next steps, please? I will address them and then have a couple of general comments. Um, okay, so I'm gonna actually use the one that's in the packet, which is slightly different wording. Uh, site plan and parking evaluation of two parking design proposals to A, not provide replacement of any of the existing 225 spaces. So, um, normally I am not a proponent of parking. In this case, I think eliminating all of the parking from the public's use for the train, um, doesn't make a lot of sense. I think for the people who are going to live on the east side of the tracks, it makes a lot of sense not to supply parking because the vast majority of them are obviously going to walk to that straight train station. And that's gonna be a very busy train station when you've got 3,500 to 4,000 units within a quarter mile of one another. Um, the people on the west side of the train station are not gonna go to that train station. Um, especially if they're on the other side of the Alcamino, they're not gonna drive over there. There's just no way to get there and park. And I think that, that it's going to discourage those people from accessing this train station. And to refer that problem, or defer that problem, and expect Hillstale Train Station to pick up that, that, uh, loss, I believe is inaccurate because recently Caltrain decided that they weren't going to do an option of a parking structure in Bay Meadows right next to the new train station. So with the tripling of the ridership and the eliminating of parking, I think it will discourage some riders from using the train. And I know Caltrain says that they don't, they are not in the parking business, they're in the transportation business, but they do kind of go hand in hand. Um, there's already numerous discussions of folks who don't go to the train station any longer because they As far as putting all of the parking in building A, I, my proposal, as far as I can look at it, there's gonna be roughly 50,000 square feet of parking at this site between the two podium levels. I'm not sure if you take the 230, uh, units and you multiply it by 210 square feet, I think we're around 50,000 square feet. If you're using mechanized parking, you can reduce the square footage of your parking space from 50 to 70 percent. I would propose using a combination of surface parking and mechanized and getting, if, if you use the point five, point five percent, or point five per bedroom, um, as you can because of your bonus density, you'd only have to install 37 parking spots for building B. You could, and if you did it mechanized, you would use an extremely small amount of space. And if you wanted to, you could just tunnel from building A to building B and access your parking and not have to use the EVA for access. I think it would save you money, and I think if you were able to do that, you might be able to use some of your 50,000 square feet for public parking. I, I, I just don't know how we can take away all of the public parking and still encourage the full use of that station. Um, that's it for the circulation. Um, the overall architectural style, was there anything else on that? Locate the entirety. Yeah, I don't, I don't like putting all of the parking in one site. Although where the city's going to be building downtown with the low-cost housing and a parking structure next door, at least there, they're going to put in a elevated passageway so you're not walking on the street and it will be covered. It's another option which you could do. It's a very short distance over that little plaza, and it would be somewhat more accommodating than having to walk down the path out in the rain and being inconvenienced at that, just to get from one spot to the other. Um, okay, the building design. I commend the architect and the teams for work, working with this, um, unique slice of land. Um, they, uh, I think getting as many units in there as you can, um, is, is great. Um, what I don't like is the small plaza of a thousand square feet. I think you really should be going to a higher square footage, um, to really use that space well. Um, the screening for the podium garage. I don't know how to ever make a screening attractive. I've been trying for quite a while to get applicants to at least use, um, uh, living walls in those locations. I think they can be a huge advantage. Um, they're low-cost maintenance, um, and, uh, I think they're very attractive. And I think it would work well in this situation, especially since it is facing the, uh, train station. Um, the overall building design, um, I think we're getting into a situation throughout the Bay Area where modern is, is the only design that we are, uh, we are using now, especially for residential. It's a good-looking building, but it doesn't, it doesn't, um, separate itself. It's gonna look like an extension of, of Station Park Green, as far as I can tell. Um, and it's not going to set aside by itself. It's not going, it, it doesn't have a lot of, of, of unique features that will make it an enhanced-looking building. I don't, I know, I do know that this will go to Larry Cannon and his outfit will look at it, but I, I'm, I'm just getting somewhat concerned that almost all of our three, four-story residential buildings have a cookie cutter appearance, and this one falls into it. I'm not saying it's a bad look. I'm just saying we aren't looking past the modern, uh, modern, uh, building and thinking about how we can incorporate some unique materials to make each building look a little bit more, um, individual than the other. Um, I like the open space upstairs. I'd like to see the, uh, the dog park at minimum be used by others in the neighborhood, um, if that was feasible. I understand restricting the open space on top, of course, to just the, just the applicant, or the, the, um, residents of that building. Um, but I, I would, I would stress seeing if you could, you know, do something more unique with your parking. I do have one other overriding concern, and I have spent the last year or so somewhat following and, and getting engaged with another, um, property that is being proposed on public space. And it's the Peninsula Healthcare District, which has been in the works for, I think, over 10 years. And now because of a lot of public input and pushback, they've kind of pushed the pause button. And I would hate to see this project not move along at a good pace if we are engaged in a legal battle of sort and then, which could be avoided with, avoided by cooperating with, with advocates who might think that they have a legal standing here. Um, this is a, this is a great location. I, I think it's, it's a, a, a nice spot for housing, and I'd hate to see it delayed over a legal battle. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maldonado.
Um, I wanna first, um, compliments the applicant for, number one, providing more affordable housing than what the minimum is. We get a lot of applications that come in of developers, and they always try to stick with the minimum, um, of affordable housing units. And you came, um, above that, and you also have moderate, um, housing units as well. Um, with issue number one, um, understanding that that Caltrain parking lot station is a very underutilized station, um, I still have reservations about removing it 100 percent and not having the ability or the access, um, for the community to have, um, a way, if, it, it is underutilized at 12 percent, uh, but still that, those 12 percent of individual riders that are using the, actually parking lot, that's, is their only means of parking, um, close to the actual train station, or, so they'll have to use other means of other, looking for street parking or residential parking, um, to get to, um, the train station. Um, so removing it 100, 100, 100 percent, um, does cause reservations, is we are increasing all of these different residential, um, buildings in this whole area. So, yes, it was low ridership when historically there was not that meant, that much development on that property, on that area, um, historically before. Now with the addition of Fish and Park Green, with this addition, other additions of other commercial and residential units, we are gonna see an increase in individual ridership using that train station. Um, so by removing the actual parking lot itself, I see that as a, one of the biggest hurdles and issues for the actual community itself, because that, those individuals will have to start looking for other ways to park, um, and they'll take residential parking, um, as, as it has been seen in other different, um, stations. Um, my other issue is with the placement of the, I believe it's the first plaza, um, the 1,000 square foot plaza, that's also on the same, uh, location area as the, um, car garage, as the entrance to the garage. Um, and my hesitation is the placement of that station, of that plaza, because you actually, in some of your, um, images, you have, um, seating, you have outdoor seating, you have seating planters, you have other different things where individuals can sit and, and families can be outside, but you're also gonna have an influx of cars coming in and out, in and out of the actual complex itself. Um, so I, if there's an idea, if there's, um, if you can look to maybe using the, um, transit station connection, um, the midpoint of both building A and B as maybe expanding the plaza. Um, you have, I believe in that area, you have a lot more, um, square footage area to maybe even have a 5,000 square foot plaza in that location. Um, but move, removing it from the, that's, um, section of the building where you have a lot of, and that's actually the main, the main corridor for all delivery trucks, for all these different other vehicles that are gonna be going there on a daily, on a day-to-day basis, um, including, um, garbage collection and other different, other types of, um, day-to-day delivery service with mail, uh, with packages and food as well. Um, I do, so, um, the, I do like the design. Um, I do like the architectural design of the building itself. Um, if you could integrate some of the other features that you have at, um, 880 Sumatera Drive, I believe you have more of a stone, um, stone facade on, on that building, so if you can, um, incorporate some of that to this building. I love the modern contemporary design. Some other individuals on the commission do not, but I do. Um, but, but if you can integrate other different mediums and other different types of materials, um, that would look amazing. I do want to, um, to highlight that, um, you only presented in your presentation about the, um, onsite amenities that are in building A, um, which are more of the outdoor living spaces, more of the, more of the, um, play area, more of the grilling and things like that. But I do wanna commend you on also having a dog park in building B and also a, excuse me, a half-court basketball court, um, there also in building, in building B as well. Um, so those were two other features that I first initially thought that building A was getting all the fun, snazzy little, um, amenities, but no, well, those amenities have been split up between both buildings. Um, I do have issues about the, the parking only being in one location. As, um, other commissioners have said, it's kind of hard if you have building B, um, 34 percent of all of your units are one and two bedrooms, so those will be, um, a family of four. Um, so it's like, how do you, how can you figure out a way to provide, number one, safety, and also convenience to the individuals who are in that specific building? Um, so I believe those are my comments.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Maldonado. I believe Commissioner Mallory, you did not get a chance to give your feedback on the building design.
I will just say that Commissioner Maldonado gave my feelings about additional texture or stone on the facade, so I'm happy. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Well, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Bush and everybody from Source Regis and, and, um, everybody else on that team, uh, for the presentation. Um, and I appreciate you bringing the extra subject matter experts, uh, like Ms. Epstein from Caltrain. I thought that was very helpful, uh, for the study session. Uh, I did, um, I did have the chance to attend the, uh, neighborhood meeting. And I did notice, uh, at that meeting, uh, much like the, uh, you know, commentary and questions, um, that were, that came in in writing, and with the people who took the time to speak to the commission, um, there was a lot of concern around the concept of no replacement parking for the current 250, uh, plus spots, um, that are available. And, uh, I'm surprised that that wasn't a part of the, um, commentary or presentation from the applicant. Uh, I do think that, uh, you know, stepping back and looking at the fact that you have a building, uh, cross-concor that has a, you know, a commercial usage that actually tries to get its tenants to use that public space, I think that's a challenge, um, around not having replacement parking. Uh, I believe that the, uh, fact that, um, ridership is planning to triple, uh, that there is quite a bit of transit-oriented development going on that has, has taken place or that will be taking place on that area, and that's certainly been a topic, um, in the general plan conversations. Um, that's a concern I have. So I would echo, uh, the concerns that the other commissioners have all raised around the concept of no replacement parking for park and ride users of that station. I think, uh, whatever, uh, traffic or studies are done before any kind of final application, um, I hope it's taking into account, uh, what are the options gonna be for users of that station that don't involve them parking in the neighborhood streets around that area, because we've heard the neighbors' concerns about that. I heard at the neighborhood meeting, I've seen it in writing, and I've heard it, um, here at the meeting. And so it certainly is a major hurdle, uh, that I can't speak for the other commissioners, but that I would have, um, before I could find, you know, um, make the approval findings, uh, for the, of final application. So hopefully there's some responsive changes around that. Uh, with regard to the site circulation and access on-site, uh, I did, you know, in looking at the size, so I do acknowledge, like others have mentioned, that is a very challenging lot size to accommodate. And I do think, uh, that there's been, um, a great attempt to balance, um, access, safe access, and also a large number of units. 189 units, um, is an accomplishment on that footprint. Um, the, initially I was concerned about that first plaza and the size of it, uh, only being a thousand square feet. Uh, but in looking, you know, when you look at it on the screen, it's a little bit of a different than looking on the paper. I actually thought that it, where it's situated, it looks bigger than it is. I actually thought that where it's situated, it looks bigger than it is. But my bigger concern on the location of that plaza with regard to this project is how it's going to be used. When there's 189 families living there, I do have concerns with using Concorde as just a stopping point for all deliveries and services that are provided to the residents. I have a concern with the, and again, there's a concern. I don't know what any, if possible, responsive change could be made to it. So I'm just raising the concern as the other commissioners have. But having that pedestrian area and that pedestrian plaza in the middle being used also as a very key emergency access point, I just get, we see other projects where there are alleys or less frequent-used spaces that are those points of entrance and exit for vehicles. My read of this presentation is that that is meant to be a pedestrian plaza, community space, but it's also now meant to be for moving trucks and for garbage trucks. And I just have a concern about that. With regard to the building design, I feel it's a very attractive, modern style. I looked at the material board that is back here, and I think it's very attractive. I think it will show very well from the other side of the tracks and from riders. I think it will represent San Mateo very well. So actually, I very much appreciate the architectural style and site design. That urban open space, again, it is small. I don't have a concern about the size of it. My concern is more around the location and how that impacts the other uses of the residents that others have brought up. So those are my comments.
Okay, we will close this item. Thank you. Reports and announcements?
Yes, just to preview some upcoming meetings. At your next meeting on September 24th, we'll have two items. One, of course, is the UFS and Ground Storage Facility. We did distribute to you the final EIR, so you should have gotten a hard copy. There's a link to the document on the Clean Water page. We have had an errata sheet that's been issued, and also the mitigation monitoring reporting program, which basically says, here's how the mitigation measures will be implemented. That's up on the website, but I also have hard copies, since we gave you hard copies, the final EIR. So I will give those to you tonight. Or if you just take one and pass one down, thank you. The other item on the 24th is a duplex condo conversion. I'm not sure which of you were on the commission the last time we had one of these, but I think it took the sum total of 10 to 15 minutes. So we should schedule that item first, and it should be relatively quick. It's the same type of item. On October 10th, we tentatively have scheduled the return of 866 Viewery Drive, single-family home that the commission looked at once before. There were some issues with the accuracy of the building plan or the submitted plans, so we're coming back, just so the commission is aware. We did, and this is coincidentally a project that's been reassigned over to fill up, we met with the neighbors in the area just to let them know because it's been quite some time since there's been any activity. So rather than wait until the postcard went out, we went and had a meeting and just went over the plans with them. We don't have anything scheduled for October 22nd, that may change. And in November, we plan on having a pre-application study session, much as tonight's, on Peninsula Heights. If you go to the What's Happening page, you'll see that's the element of townhouses up on Campus Drive. We're placing a couple of existing office buildings with townhouses, somewhat similar to the Waters Office Park Residential that you reviewed. Couple of other meetings. If you've been to the Thursday night event on B Street, we'll have a general plan booth. We had it last Thursday and the next two Thursday nights. Additionally, I had sent to you from 21 Elements on Wednesday, October 30th. I think some of you have been to some of the Planning Commission trainings. 21 Elements is a consortium of the county, plus the 20 cities in San Mateo County that get together to discuss issues that affect the entire county. I think I've used county three times in that sentence. So the next one will be related to transportation issues. You're certainly encouraged to attend. I'll probably attend. Dinner's provided, and there's no cost to that. So if you misplaced the email, you need it sent to you again. Just let me know, and I can forward that information to you. You also did, I believe, get the email from me. Lillem is leaving as zoning administrator to take a position in the private sector, which we're very sad about, but it's a great opportunity for her, so certainly we wish her well. And then we're looking at staffing. And so once I have something to report back, I'll certainly let you know how the staffing has occurred. I believe that concludes staff's announcements.
Okay, excellent. Any commissioners with any reports, report outs or announcements? Okay, excellent. Then I will close the meeting. Thank you, everybody.